As soon as you give us the colors. Okay, folks, everyone that's on the call, let's pledge allegiance to the flag. I will lead. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you, folks. All right, you are tuned into the October 13th meeting of the Town of Canadago Planning Board, and I will do a roll call to see who's with us as far as board members. Brian Stachak.
I am here.
Gary Humes.
I am here.
Bob La Course.
I am here.
Amanda Benleykett.
I'm here.
Karen Blasey was excused tonight. We also have our recording secretary, John Robitella.
Yeah, I'm here.
Our town engineer, Lance Brayben. And we all know Eric Cooper, who is our town planner. Okay. Procedure, if you've not sat in on any of our meetings, is fairly simple. We take each application one by one. We ask the applicant to make a presentation. He or she does that, and then after the presentation, the floor is open to the board to ask any questions, the board members. The board members, when they've more or less ran out of questions and comments, we then will open it up to the the general audience for any concerns, questions, comments they may have, and then we'll go back to the applicant for any follow-ups, and then we will take take action on the application, both if applicable, the seeker, as well as the resolution for approval or denial. We would ask that if you do speak up, that you provide your name and address, so John can record your attendance and your comments. And with that being said, I will move on to probably to the floor. If anyone is out there who is sitting in our meeting just for the purposes of providing comments to the board, a concern that is not on the agenda, now's the time to speak up, and we will hear your plea and and try to try to resolve it. If there are none, which I think there are none, it's rare that we have people that do that. Most people are here for a purpose of one of the applications. So hearing none, I will move on to the attesting of legal notices. We have this evening a continuation of a public hearing, so I guess no formal legal notice was required. Am I correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so so I even bother to reopen the hearing because apparently the the applicant Gerber Homes and BME have checked in with Eric and told them where they stand. Eric, do you want to?
Yeah, I can't remember what our process might be. Do we reopen it and continue it again? They've asked to be tabled is essentially what's going on. The BME shot me an email this morning saying that the neighbor is apparently trying to retain a professional engineer to kind of work together at BME to devise an appropriate plan. As such, they haven't had the opportunity to do that yet and would like to be continued. I would think 30 days would be appropriate. They did not give a date estimate.
They would want 30 days and not till the meeting on the 27th?
They didn't give a estimate of how long it might take, but I would imagine that two weeks probably isn't enough time.
All right, well, let's make it 30 because I think our agenda for the 27th is is pretty heavy. All right. I will entertain a motion to continue table this action on Gerber and BME Homes representing a property owner 3215 Daisy Way, whereby they're seeking an amended subdivision, final subdivision plan to allow them to, or at least condone the raising of the floor by two feet. Do I have a motion?
So moved. This is Ryan.
Thank you, Ryan. Second?
Ariel, second.
What's that meeting on in November? November 10th? Okay, so the motion should include until November 10th. And if nothing else to be said, why don't we take a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Scott Harder joined us?
Yes.
Okay, all right, well then let's move on to new site plans. The first one being Scott Harder representing Harold Bobbery, owners of property at 4789 County Road 16, who is seeking a single-stage site plan approval for a home addition within the RLD zoning district. Mr. Harder, Scott, why don't you tell us what they're doing out there?
Good evening, everybody. This is my first Zoom meeting in Canadago. I've done a few others prior to this. It looks quite similar to what we've done before.
We can't bite you.
Yeah, um, the the project is a relatively minor project as I see it. It's it's a 12 by 16 addition to the southwest corner of the existing cottage. The area is currently a concrete patio, and they wish to extend the cottage a little bit in order to create a larger area for their kitchen dining area. So we have provided a pretty detailed drawing for this work. Additionally, on our sheet two, we've actually been able to incorporate the the initial architectural building elevations to show you more specifically how it's supposed to look. What makes the project a little challenging is the existing wastewater system that surrounds the area where we're proposing to expand. We met with the Canadago Lake Watershed Inspector and reviewed possible options and decided to take advantage of the construction period to upgrade the septic tank, and if necessary, the drywall system or the leaching chambers that are in there so that there's no interference between the new construction and the wastewater system, and so that the wastewater system can be serviced without any difficulty upon completion of the project. We've responded to your most recent comments that came from Lance, I believe, asking us to make a few changes to the short environmental assessment form, which we did. And I think there were some questions regarding location of the concrete washout area, and maybe the staging area, which we can add a little more detail to the plans to to show that. And the other item that Lance brought up was the shoreline guidelines and landscaping, and I deferred largely to the owners who are taking care of the landscape being quite well and have plans to do replanting around the structure once it's built. I think they may be in on the Zoom meeting tonight. They may wish to speak with you directly on that subject if you need information from them.
Okay. Board members. Concerns, comments, questions?
This is Bob. I had a couple of questions about the tank. Is there any knowledge of where that new tank is going to go, and how close will it be to the house?
There is an existing tank there now of a size reported to be somewhere in the 600 to 700 gallon range. When I met with the Canadago Lake Watershed Inspector, it was determined that it would be most appropriate to upsize that tank with a poly tank because of the difficulty of accessing that area. And the the general plan, as shown on our drawings, is to excavate and reveal the existing tank, extract it and replace it with a new tank, hopefully of a size that will accommodate a four-bedroom situation. If for some reason we can't fit a tank of that size in, then we would adjust the size accordingly.
So to answer my question, it's going to go back in the exact same spot?
I don't think exactly. No, I mean, we don't have precise information. We only have general information on where it is right now based on the covers that are visible on the surface. I suspect that because of a larger tank, we'll have to jock it around a little bit, and we're going to have to see. We're going to basically chase the lines going out of there to see where they arrive in terms of connecting to the leaching chambers. And then, once we see all that, we'll know much better, I believe, what's the best way to hook this up and make it work. Not only avoiding conflict with the project, but so it'll be able to be serviced more easily.
Okay, that's kind of good. I'm hoping that it doesn't interfere or go into that bank where you have to cut into the bank, which is going to disturb that foliage that's there. I was there the other day, and it's a very tight little spot there to put a almost double-sized tank in there. So that was my concern.
It is. You're correct.
And the other question I had was, have you received a letter yet from your southern neighbors? As you stated that you're going to have permission to use it.
Yes, yes, we have, and we can certainly submit that to you if you would like it.
Thank you, guys. That's all I have. Thank you.
And Scott, what was the premise of the letter?
It was authorization for them to access their property to work on the site.
Okay.
Correct. And it was forthcoming in the letters that I read.
Temporary use on her access. Okay. That's a, what, a three-bedroom house currently, Scott?
I think I think it's four-bedroom.
Is it four now? And you're saying that you're trying to get a system in there that will will handle four bedrooms, or in other words, it doesn't now?
According to the Watershed Inspector, the tank that's in there now is undersized, which is why he would like us to put in a larger-sized tank as part of this operation. And I believe in our conversation that he mentioned it was a four-bedroom cottage, which is why we're going with a 1,500-gallon tank desired. And we will open that up, and hopefully we'll be able to fit that in there.
And if you can't?
Then we would downsize it maybe to a 1,250. The the plan, as discussed with Tyler, was to open it up and use our judgment in the field to determine what's the best size to go in there.
Okay, well, I think the board is appreciative that you'll be upgrading a maybe undersized tank. So that's that's certainly improvement to both the site and to the to the surrounding neighbors, including the lake.
We're also proposing to put in an aeration device as a as another improvement to to treat the wastewater before it arrives in the leaching chambers.
How long before you think you'll have a sign off from Tyler as far as your your method procedure in terms of what you're going to do?
I believe that he submitted information to you folks as well as us indicating that he was okay with what we're proposing, and he acknowledged that we had stated everything correctly on the plans.
Yeah, we did get an email from Tyler late last week about it. I didn't get a chance to put it online before technical difficulties today. But we did get a letter from him that he pretty much had no concerns.
So the only question is, what size tank will fit in the hole?
That's going to be kind of a judgment call once we open it up. And both he and I will be there, you know, when that takes place, when the excavation takes place.
Okay, I'm reading Tyler's.
This is Ryan. I have a question, Scott. Is is are the owners okay doing an aeration device regardless of the size of it? Because if the aeration device is part of the the septic, that that is a huge enhancement for cleaning the leachate before it enters this.
Yes, they are. They are okay with it regardless of what the final size of the tank becomes.
That would be very well appreciated and super appropriate, I think.
Yeah, I think so, too.
Okay, and then, John, just for the record, here is another project where if we had sewers, wouldn't really have a concern. So just if we could just note that in the minutes, John. From my, only from my opinion, only from my opinion, though.
Yep, got it.
Okay, you show a planner, Scott, along there, I guess, the lakeside of the addition. Was there any detail as to that planner and what was going to be planted in the planner?
Well, we, in our reply letter that went out today, I submitted some photographs that the owner owners provided me with their, there's actually, if you notice on our drawings, there's plantings on the west side, the southwest side, that are going to be removed as part of the project. So they, I believe, intended transplant those those plantings, to preserve them on the on the other side of the cottage. So we're kind of shifting our planters around, as I see it. Additionally, they provided photographs of other plantings that they've used around the entire site for the board's reference. Maybe that's going to open up on my screen here. Look at that. Those are some of the plants that they have at present. If you go back through some of the other photographs, you'll see that they have it nicely decorated. And I believe they intend to continue with that, and they intended to treat the the new planting area the same way as the other planting area. And I don't know if Terry is on the line or if she's part of our group here. Terry Bobbery may want to speak to you if you want more detail on what they would like to do.
Are you out there, Terry?
Hi, right here.
Okay.
I'm an avid gardener, and I plant perennials and annuals every year, as you can see.
Very nice.
Thank you.
And then you were discussing the tank size. I happened to be here when Tyler was here, and his suggestion, and we're in total agreement, is we put in the largest tank that the size of the land will accommodate with an aeration system. And we're 100% in agreement.
And that's Harold speaking, right?
Yes, correct.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, so that was a question I had about the planner, and it sounds like you're going to have so a lot of plants in your planner.
And Chuck, that also, that extension is almost going to be covered by that row of, what is it, Arnavides right there in that tree, I noticed. So that the new extension is not going to be really sticking out there. I noticed that it looked like it would be pretty much hidden back there.
Yes, that's correct.
Well, I would think with the planner and the the plans that were proposed, I think that would certainly qualify to meet our shoreline guidelines. And as you said, they're really not that visible from the lake.
Well, the internet dumped, so I can't get online with it. It's on here.
Okay.
Charlie, is that you?
Yeah, sorry.
That's all right. Charlie's here for the next application.
Okay, so Charlie had a comment on this application. All right. Downspouts. If you want to go back to the plan, I see you had some downspouts on the existing bump out, and I guess you're bumping it out a little further, and you've got you're just going to dump it on grade and splash blocks?
You know, we got that comment from Lance the other day, and our response was that we will we will locate the downspouts and and we'll make sure that everything is splash blocked appropriately as he requested. That was that was a comment we just received. Quite honestly, I did not take a look at the gutters or the downspouts or the splash blocks until I received that comment last week. But we can certainly show that on the final plans that we submit to you and and our and how we will address that.
Lance, do we have enough protection as far as soil erosion control? All the activities going to be occurring up in that southwest corner with septic tank replacement, the addition? I guess all that's proposed are measures down along the silt fence and, I guess, hay bales?
Yeah, so, you know, one of our comments was just making sure that the limits of disturbance accurately reflect what is being disturbed associated with this project. That includes the leach area, so I don't.
I think Charlie, you're getting some feedback here.
Got it. Sorry.
So I do believe the proposal of silt fence with straw bales is appropriate. However, we recommend that since straw bales are no longer really in appropriate use, that we just back, there's a there's a detail that the DEC provides which shows silt fence, you know, being backed with straw bales. There's like a method to doing that. A little just silt fence and then straw bales. So we recommended in our letter that they provide that. Other option would be two rows of silt fence, which is typical of what we've suggested on other projects.
That's perfectly fine with us.
But but I think the disturbance area is very minimal. I don't think they're going to have much dirt to have to control. But I just think of the just the leach area, once they determine where that is, being shown on, a little bit more accurately shown on the project, just to get a better number of terms of where we're doing work in that.
Yeah. Are those stairs going to remain, or are you trying to work around them?
I believe we want to keep those, and that's the reason we solicited access from the neighbor to the south.
Anything else, board? Just looking at a couple of third-party reviews or non-reviews. It did not go to Ontario County Plane Board. It was not required to go to them. We talked about Tyler's comments. The ECB, they had a concern about the septic system, and I think we've addressed that adequately. Shoreline compliance, I think we discussed it, and what was stated to be provided will suffice. Is there anything that we should consider in our resolution regarding the site plan approval? That should be additional conditions based on the discussion we had this evening?
I'd like to condition the aeration system if it's not already there.
I believe it's indicated on the plans, but that's fine. Put it in if you'd like.
Just for the record, I do have the fact that it does require an approval from Canadago Lake Watershed Inspector prior to issuance of CFO. I don't specifically state aeration system, Ryan, so maybe that's where we can add it in if you want.
That sounds great. Thank you, Lance. I'm ready to make a motion as soon as we're good to go.
Just for the board's record and for tonight, the only thing that I that I've heard so far that I definitely think we should put in here, as we've done before, is just a general statement, maybe at number six, that the shoreline guidelines have been met.
Okay, well, we have the findings, right, that we discussed it.
We've done it both ways. We've done it both ways. So just your call on that.
Okay, well, you have number six there. Might as well fill it in with something, so. Yeah, why don't you put something to that effect? All right, it is a type-two seeker, so it's fairly simple. I think you want to scroll up a bit, Eric. I think we need a definitive plan date. In there, you have September 2020. Scott, what's your latest, what's the drawing we're looking at tonight? The date, the revision?
If you look, if you look in the title block, it should show the latest revision right there.
Okay, 9/22.
9/22.
So if we could add a 22 to that paragraph on both the seeker and the site plan, that'll make sure that everybody knows the plan we looked at tonight and what we're considering. All right, with that being said, let's do a piggyback and do two-for-one. Someone want to make a motion for seeker and site plan?
Yeah, this is Gary. I'll go ahead and make a resolution for to approve a site plan approval and a determination for new seeker on CPN 20-063. Scott Harder, representing Harold Aubrey, and with the site plan approval resolution with six conditions as stated.
Right.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second it, Bob.
Hey, Gary made a motion. Bob seconded to approve both the seeker and the site plan. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Good luck, Bobries.
Thank you very much.
Happy planning. All right, let's someone have a question, or is that just feedback? Okay, we're moving on to CPN 20064. It's Mr. Grove, Bill Grove, representing Robert and Amy Tate, and they own property at 5279 Black Rock Drive. They're seeking a single-stage site plan approval to tear down and rebuild cottage within the RLD zoning district. So, Bill, welcome.
Yep, I'm here.
Want to tell us what the, yep, yep, you want to tell us a little bit about this unique property?
Sure. So it's a property that Bob and Amy Tate own, and they are proposing to replace a one-bedroom cabin that sits above the lake. It's about 75 feet in elevation above the shoreline, and it's situated in a switchback of the existing driveway. And they would like to replace that that structure with a new one-bedroom structure that's a little bit bigger in footprint, but not much, just so they can get more use out of the property. Amy Tate had supplied an email with a statement. I don't have that handy. I wonder if Eric does, if he wanted to read that. Explaining why.
What's that? Do you know when the email is from?
It was earlier today. Let me see. I can probably find it. Sorry.
I think I got it right here. Can you all read that? I know it's pretty small, I guess.
What's, what's the gist, folks? We love getting things at the meeting. Thank you for.
There's all that stuff, and then I think this is probably more relevant for their intent. By removing the guest cottage, we hope to achieve the following objectives. Clean up a seasonally used structure that struggled against woodland creatures. Provide destruction garage accessible year-round because the driveway is pretty treacherous going further down. Create a guest room, the private bath. None of the guest rooms have it below. Create a bedroom that could be handicap accessible in a separate private area for guests, allowing more privacy for us, work, Zoom calls, et cetera. And essentially, they're adding a second story. They're trying to blend it with the woodscape, and their neighbor will be managing the project. Looks like Ryan's got his hand up.
Ah, I see where Charlie comes in. Okay.
Eric, how can we allow to have two residences on one parcel?
Because it already exists like that today.
Even if they're going to tear it down?
Yep. Again, it's a pre-existing non-conformity. They're not expanding the degree of non-conformity because it, well, it's the same number of rooms, but it's also the same number of dwelling units on one parcel.
Okay. Anything else, Bill, you have? You want to talk a little bit about the septic system?
Sure. Yeah, I'd love to. The, the existing cottage does have plumbing in it, the cabin, I mean. So there's a water service going to it. There's a wastewater line that goes out to a grinder pump tank. And then that affluent is pumped up the hill to a. A, a box where the line from the main cottage comes in. Then it flows by gravity out to an aerobic unit and then into a pretty substantially sized leach field. Isn't all that old. I believe it was put in in around 2005. So our proposal, because of the, we're expanding to the north of the existing cabin a little bit. And the existing grinder pump tank is within the footprint of the covered deck now. That will excavate that and relocate that further to the north. And you can see it on the drawing there. The existing propane tank will also have to be relocated to accommodate the project. But we did get sign off from Kandig Lake Watershed on the, the proposal because it's a, a single bedroom cabin. And it's going to continue to be a single bedroom cabin that we meet the current design standards as such.
Might be a good time to, I think there were elevations included in the application, right? It'd be a good time to put those up. I think they were a nice looking building, probably. A little bit better than what's there. It sits up in the woods, up on the hill, I guess. Really? Is it visible from the lake?
It probably is in the fall or in the winter time when the leaves are off. But generally there's about 100 feet of wooded hillside between the cottage. Or between the, the driveway below the cottage and the shoreline. So it's not very visible. From the water, especially during the summer months.
Yeah, Chuck, I was there yesterday and could barely see the lake.
Okay. So shoreline guidelines are not an issue again with this one?
No.
Do they have the intent to landscape any of the furniture at elevation on the, well, on any of the sides? Are they just going to? I don't think it shows anything on the plan.
You're correct. Maybe Charlie can chime in on this one. I think he's had some, some discussions with Bob and Amy. About what to do as far as the landscaping goes.
Try to unmute Charlie here.
Well, you're bringing him up. I know the ECB had some concerns about some trees, a couple, about 12 trees are going to be. Felled as a result of the, the addition, the construction. So I guess. Not that we're asking for 12 trees back, but there should be a little quote pro quo here in terms of.
Can you hear me now?
Hey, there it is.
Sorry about that.
Your time, your time to talk, Charlie.
The, I did talk to the Tates this morning again about the local corner and floor. And that's really what they want to go back with to make it look as normal as it has at this current time. Because they don't want to put in a bunch of fir trees or anything of that nature. They want to really plant exactly what's around it now. To make it feel, keep the natural feel. They also wish to bury the, the propane tank. Because that's just going to be an eyesore. And there are some trees that have been taken down. They, I've been working on this for probably a month. And the trees that were taken down next to the house is a couple. Which are near where the garage is going to go. They were already dead. And, and definitely in trouble of falling into the, into the roadway. So. There were two that were there that were taken down. I did look at the limits of clearing again to the north where you see the propane tank. There's almost nothing there that has to be removed or touched. And they want to keep it as natural as they can, just enough of the brush and the saplings to put in. The little bit of an addition that is to the north of the current footprint.
I guess they wait long enough. There's enough volunteer plants that they will take off and grow.
Exactly. Yeah.
Bob, does that concur with your visits to the site? Do you think that's appropriate?
Yeah, I saw a couple, I think there were black walnut trees that looked, looked like they were taken out there. I do have a, had a concern though, Charlie, with your drawing on the. I can't put my mouse on it, but the, the silt fence, it doesn't look like it goes long enough. If you're going to be doing construction all the way down. Way past that, that driveway is going to carry any of that debris right down to the lake. That was my one, one concern I had there.
That could definitely be extended. I would agree with that frankly.
Yeah. Cause I mean, that is a steep driveway for sure.
Oh, it's a roller coaster. If you, if something got on it, it would be gone for sure.
Yeah, right.
And we could do some additional, additional sediment control there. Probably some stake straw bales along the, the edge of the driveway would be a good idea. You know, at least in the, in the area, maybe from, oh, where the water service crosses, you know, up to the proposed retaining wall.
Yeah, definitely something additional there for sure. That would help.
Yeah, it has, the silt fence has been upgraded to reinforce too, I believe, on your drawing there, Bill.
And I had a question for Lance. Number six in your conditions, I think you said you wanted to add the. The water level, mean high water level. Is that needed on a project this high up?
You mean on my comment letter?
Yeah.
I agree with you. It's just sometimes we, we ask for it just so that it's information to have in case there's ever any work done with the lower part. But as it pertains to this particular location, no.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
And I did add that on a revised plan today, incorporating the rest of Lance's comments and.
Correct.
The minor upgrades we had to do for that.
The. The driveway is gravel and, but it will be paved right alongside the house on the south side. Is that, is that correct? If I remember the plan?
It is mostly blacktop currently.
Oh, the driveway?
Yes.
Oh, why didn't think it was gravel?
As you go up around the turnaround that is to the south of it. Yeah, that area there shaded with the green. Some of that is not blacktop, but there's blacktop around it otherwise.
Okay, that's what I was thinking. I see existing gravel driveway to be regraded and then, yeah.
Right. So that was the driveway access to the cottage itself.
To the cottage, okay.
I have a little parking area that was gravel.
Well, you got that plan up, Eric. Are there any issues? Everything's capacetic as far as easements, access easements? I mean, I would certainly hope so, being it's an existing cabin. But all the, all the legalese is in place to allow you to get down there. I know. I know that driveway is, is a snake. What, or, or is it, is it all on one property? Maybe there, maybe there is no.
Looks like it kind of crosses on Tom's property a bit as well as.
Could be where the property line is on.
Black point club, partially.
I thought that was an issue somebody had had regarding any easements, access easements. And as far as any easements for, where you're sharing septic systems, it's all the same property owner. So that's not a requirement. The retaining wall. Bill, did you have a detail of that anywhere?
I do. Yeah. Yep. In the, the last two sheets of the site plan have details of the retaining wall.
Okay. Yeah, this, this is the way we had to look at the plans. There it is. Okay. And it's, what, it's how high is it? It's high.
The lower wall is eight foot at the highest location and the upper wall is three feet.
Three feet.
Believe I have that the right way. Other way around.
Looks like the lower wall is eight.
That's right. Yeah. The lower wall, the downhill wall is the lower one.
By the driveway, by the driveway. Okay.
And that, the wall may end up being changed to poured concrete with a, with a stone veneer on it. But it'll, we'll make sure that it's, you know, we have an engineered plan on that before we build it.
Yeah, she wasn't thrilled about the keystone block. She wanted to have something that was more natural and fitting to the area. But is to be determined at this point.
Let's see what else. Board, help me out. Anybody else out there? Have any? Questions, concerns? Brian, are you?
Yeah, you know, to me, this, even though it's in the RLD, it just seems like it's still kind of a typical. Construction. It, it's such a large lot and it's forested. I don't really see any issues with shoreline guidelines. I kind of feel like it's, it's like a, it's a weird. The site is just, it seems like it's forested. Everything seems to be in detail. My main concerns with those, those walls are that there's enough drainage in the bottom of them to get the water out. But they're engineered plans, so we have to make sure that they're built to spec. And that's, I mean, I'm, I'm pretty comfortable with this plan as presented.
How about the, the, the downspouts and roof drains off the new structure?
Yeah, I've got those shown going through that area. Just, yeah, those are the.
Oh, that light.
Drain lines, a footer drain and a roof leader. Runoff going to a rip rap splash pad located there in the, the ditch above the driveway.
Does the runoff cross the driveway or go down the north side of, or the west side, northwest side?
Oh, it does cross the driveway. There's a, an existing crossing just. Just east or just northeast of the water service, I believe is where it is.
And then it goes off the bank down toward the existing cottage. Okay. Okay. Well, the board members are thinking of any more questions. I will let you know that we did not have to send it to the county planning board. We got an ag data statement which was included in our packet. Eric, it didn't have a date or signature on it. Do you sign that normally? Or I mean, it was, it looked like it was sort of incomplete.
Ag data statement?
Yeah, I think so. I think that's what I was looking at.
I believe there's a place for us to sign it, which we generally don't anyways. It's for like after permitting. And then there's probably a place for the outker to sign it as well.
Okay. I think, I think it was lacking any signatures. Okay. ECB, they were concerned, as I said, about the trees that were being taken down. They had said something about using permanent pavers instead of blacktop. I don't think it's a big issue up there. Being on this size, this size lot. Teshar Fire Company, God help them if they ever go down there with a fire truck.
A bit like my driveway.
But I guess they, they know the structures are there and hope they never get a call. MRB, you're okay, Lance? Anything you want to bring to our attention before we take action?
No, I, I think you guys pretty much highlighted a lot of our comments and. And I did get Bill Grove's response to our comments and the revised plans that were submitted today. And I have no additional issues.
Okay. Are we good on the, how the steep slubs were treated? I, I think it's awfully steep, but I think.
They stay out of them as much as possible.
Yeah, they minimized as much as they could.
Okay. Well.
Yeah, that was, that was kind of my view on this whole thing is that they're really just replacing the existing structure in the place that it's there, that where it is today. And we frankly, just making it better than it is today.
Okay. Is the intent to have this like a rental cottage or cabin? Is that?
No. It, it's as she said in her cover letter that. You know, with the family kind of grown and gone and they're now retired, Bob and Amy Tate. There's somewhere for families, their family and their kids to be able to, you know, have some space.
Okay. Similar to what the Tom Schwartz does next door with his, his property, I guess. Yeah. Cause they, they have family reunions, which is, which is good. I'm glad they'll have the facilities to be able to do that and continue it. All right. If I don't hear anything else, we can put up the two resolutions. It is a type two seeker.
Mr. Chairman, the date, the date at the top will have to be revised to reflect the latest and greatest version that was provided.
Okay. Yeah, I think it was 9/17. Okay. Do I have, let's look at the results of this conditions. See kind of SOP. Anything else we want to add? I, I think the, obviously the minutes and the findings that reflect that we discussed shoreline guidelines. As well as steep slopes and we're comfortable with the, the plan as presented.
And the silt fence.
Yeah. Do you want that as a condition that the silt fence be extended?
Yeah.
Okay. You got that Lance? That would be number seven?
Yeah. So number six should be removed. The phosphorus notes are in fact in the notes on the planning sheet. So I think to Bob's request, we would make a new number six.
Bob, it sounds like you're halfway into the motion. So why don't you continue?
Yeah, I'll make a motion as soon as I can see it. There we are. I'll make a motion to accept. Bill Grove and Grove Engineering representing Amy Tate at 5279 Black Point Drive. In the RLD District, CPN 20-064 for single stage site plan approval. And also wrapping that up with the seeker two resolution also.
Any other comments, concerns? If not, all in favor? Oh, excuse me. Did I get a second?
I'll second, Gary will second it.
Okay. Now we're good to go. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Very good. Charlie, Bill, have at it.
Thank you guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Okay. That sounded like Rocco. Must be on the line.
Rocco is.
Right on cue.
Yeah. Just in, yeah, just in time for the kickoff of the Bills game.
Let's go, Rocco. Make it quick, will you, Bob?
I'm gonna make it fast. If I start yelling and screaming, it's not because I'm mad at you guys, because I'm mad at the television.
Can we put it in one of our, our things here, the game, so we can watch it? What does it mean? Nevermind. Okay. Let's, let's go quick. What do you, you've got two lots out there you want to build on? I know we were familiar with the lots.
They're both sold. They're both sold. Gerber Homes. You know, Gerber, John Grazion and Bruce Gerber are building the homes, Gerber Homes. Frank MacGruin and his daughter, Tina, oh, you know, are buying the lots and building the homes. So, so they're, they're pretty straightforward. They're, you know, recently you saw the five V one stuff. All of the lots now are sold and there'll be four houses being built this fall. The one on the right is starting and then these two will start right after we get this taken care of. And then Anthony's lot in the rear will start. So, and, and the common drive has been constructed. It's in place, the stone. So what we want to do is put these two homes and we got them both on the same. So what we want to do is put these two homes and we got them both on the same plan. And they're pretty straightforward, you know, the utilities will all be right in front. Driveways come in at a gentle slope up to the home sites. The homes are about two feet above the grade. And everything's going to be graded so that it flows back towards the west of the lots and into the existing drainage catch basins that take it down to the ponds in five V one. That's the overview. It's, it's pretty straightforward. I think there's a little bit of confusion in, in the drawing elevations that were sent. I think that the drawing elevation for forty-eight is actually the one for forty-nine and vice versa. So the homes you see on the elevation.
Yeah, that's right. That's my note. I must have done that wrong.
Yeah, not a big deal. But that's the overview.
Forty-eight's a smaller house and forty-nine's a larger.
No, forty-nine's the smaller house, I think.
You had them back, you had them backwards, right?
Right.
Okay.
Correct.
And what's the sequence, Rocco? Forty-eight, forty-nine, Anthony? Is that the way you're going?
So right now. Right now, fifty-seven, we're waiting to dig, but we had to put the sureties in place. And that goes to the town board next Monday. Is that correct?
Should be on the agenda.
Okay, so, so, so then the day after they'll dig the house across the street. And then we'll be, we'll be pursuing permits for these two shortly after, probably forty-nine first and forty-eight maybe a few weeks later. I don't know if Frank MacGree's on, but if he is, he can comment more on the timing.
That's okay.
Is he out there?
I'm here.
Okay, you want to talk a little bit about the timing?
I think you said it right. Forty-nine will go first. That would be my daughter. Okay. That would be probably the middle of November and that probably about December first on forty-eight.
All right.
And then, and then Anthony behind there, which is not on your slate there, but Anthony behind there will start in December also.
Okay. Yeah, I think it's pretty cut and dry. Hopefully you got the right first floor elevation, so we don't have to revisit these lots again.
Now, now, now.
Just keep reminding you.
I know, I know.
Let's see, I, I, yeah, you got that drainage going to that inlet in the back. I knew that was one thing we talked about, lumping time, so.
Yeah, we want to get the drainage into the four bay and then the big pond, the regional pond, you know. So, so none of the drainage is affecting anybody. It's going across our lots.
Right.
And out, out into the existing, you know, the van system.
Okay, I, I think we have this broken down into two applications, so there's no seeker required. So let's just consider the two applications at the same time, oh sixty-eight and oh seventy for a single state site plan approval.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Gerber Homes and BME Associates, representing the Malley's Family Trust.
Wait, wait, sorry, this, this one must have been out of order. There we go.
Venese Development Group LLC, Fox Ridge subdivision phase five B one, lot forty-eight and forty-nine. Breeze Wake, CPN two zero dash zero seven zero and.
Two zero dash zero six eight.
Six eight with the.
Five, five conditions. Number two, basically suggests that a surety be provided, but as Rocco previously mentioned, they did provide a surety for the overall five B one, which includes dedication of water, infrastructure and roadway improvements. So there shouldn't be any additional need for a surety, in my opinion.
Five conditions as stated.
That's the same on both of the five conditions for both.
Correct.
Okay, got a second?
I'll second it. Bob.
Bob's second. Ryan's made a motion for a discussion. If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Rocco, give us, give us an update here and so will we?
I'm like just starting, but. Thanks guys, go Bills.
Go Bills, baby.
All right, well, maybe we can all get to the games soon. Let's move on to board business. I think we have two sets of minutes to consider. We have the September eighth meeting that was done by Ms. Record. Twenty-second of September meeting that John provided and distributed. So if I can have a, let's do them separately, kind of a motion for nine, eight, the September eighth meeting.
Yeah, okay. Gary will make a motion to approve the minutes from September eighth, twenty twenty.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, how about the twenty-second? If someone beat so good?
I'll make that motion to accept the meeting notes on September twenty-second.
Okay, I will second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Referrals from the board, there really aren't any.
Not yet. There's a couple of public hearings to be set at this month's town board. Generally, you've seen them before. The off-street parking one you've seen. There's the natural resource inventory one that you've seen. There's a small local law which just changes the definition of natural resource inventory. And short-term rentals welcome to everybody, probably later this month or early next month.
You, can you pull up that list that Doug sent out with that wish list that he had? I, I was going to bring that to the board's attention of things that I guess Doug would like to see addressed. And it would have to go through ordinance committee first, but it, just to get everybody thinking of the direction the committee's going. There it is. Do you want to go over those, Eric?
Well, short-term and off-street parking we're doing right now, essentially. You'll see that soon enough. The park section of code rewrite, that chapter of code has been kind of added to piecemeal over the years. That kind of doesn't make sense, so it's going to just bring it back and make it a little more comprehensible. Four base codes, this relates to the Uptown zoning district that we're working on creating right now with Bergman Associates. I believe I've sent you a draft of that four base code as exists right now. If not, when our computers are back up, I can do that.
It's on the FTP site too.
Conservation subdivision, we are working with. Like Barb. To do that right now. It's moving relatively quickly so far, but you know, maybe in six months or so, we'll have an actual draft to do. Sureties just always been kind of a constant pain in the process. Potentially revising it so that if somebody provides us a cash surety, cashier check over twenty thousand dollars, it still doesn't have to go to the town board. Because it doesn't make sense. We already have the money in the account. It doesn't really need to be approved. The mixed use overlay, the way that we do the rezoning for the M U O is kind of cumbersome. You know, the way it's going to go to the town board, the planning board, the town board, the planning board, town board one more time. It just doesn't, it's kind of a deterrent more than a benefit to people. And so trying to finally address that. And preliminary site plan. When we, our preliminary site plan checklist, the requirements there kind of require engineering of the entire site. So, you know, whether we consider loosening that a little bit still, so enough information that we can meet the requirements of the State Environment Quality Review Act. But also trying to allow people to, to get an approval on the design maybe before going through all the engineering process. And I also have a huge list of ordinance changes myself. There's plenty of work to do for the ordinance committee.
Okay, well, obviously the conservation subdivision is of major interest to us because we have to live with it and deal with it. The form-based codes is certainly something new, exciting and coming, coming forth and give us a lot more flexibility as to how certain properties can be developed. And the next use overlay is certainly been something we've been using and has worked out well so far. And we continue to use it, but it does, as Eric said, need some massage. Okay, thanks. CBA, nothing, they don't need anything from us, nothing from the, no concerns from Chris Jensen. All right, we got a couple of other credits to take care of. First one is Gerber Homes for Eric Blas and Lindsay Dacostino. And they have properties at forty-nine fifty-one North Road. Wow, and I was drawing a blank as to that project. Oh, it's okay. No, it just hit me. All right. Yeah, they're asking for a final release of fifty-four hundred and forty-six dollars and seventy cents. I'll make a motion that we grant that release since all the, all the people who are involved in the review and the inspection have signed off on it. So I'll make that motion.
Okay, I'll second it.
Gary will second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, then. David Van den Reems, owners, he owns a property at sixty-two forty-five Golf Road. As your question, at least the shorty, that's there at the corner of Golf and twenty-one, right?
No, it's closer to the border of Bristol, it's kind of on the other side of Golf Road.
I was thinking that one right in the corner. Okay, he, he wants five hundred dollars back. I'll make a motion that we give him his five hundred bucks. Go have a second.
Second.
Okay, motion second. Bob seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, other business. Yeah, these things sort of fell onto the agenda as time went on. Marathon Engineers looking for a one-year extensions for John and Joanne Smith's property at forty-five nineteen Davison Road. One-year extension to meet the conditions of approval. Was there a reason given as to why they need the extension or is it just?
Take a guess.
Everything that's happening in the world.
That's right.
So the hundred twenty days won't, won't fit for them?
It's different. They got their plans signed and so the signed plans are good for one year and then the code says you can extend it for one year and then you could even do a year after that and after that.
Okay, someone wanted to make a motion there.
Mr. Chairman. I will revise my whereas, my, my, my number two, the very second paragraph to reference exactly that due to COVID and then the plans have been signed. It doesn't, it doesn't accurately depict the reasons why.
Very good. Yeah, okay. Yeah, I always think when people ask for extension, they should give us reason.
Yep, I agree.
Just that they, they got busy and didn't get to it. That's not an excuse. All right. I, do I have a motion? I'm sorry.
So moved.
Okay, thanks, Ryan. Who wants to second it? I will. Okay, Bob will.
Amanda needs to.
I'm trying, trying.
Coming in too late.
Goodness.
Hey, Amanda, I'm going to queue you up for the next one. So we have a motion, a second on Marathon. All in favor? Do you want to put up the resolution for Creekview? We have two, there were two approvals granted. And one was for the clubhouse, the other was for section phase two. So let's take phase two is up and we will go to Amanda.
I'll make a motion for the first ninety-day extension of CPN twenty dash zero one six, three thousand County Road ten. Phase two.
Do I have a second?
I'll second, Gary.
Amanda, your voice is much softer and better than any of the guys. Which I will, you ought to be.
I can change that.
You, you could be our designated extension. Okay.
Okay.
I hit their reason. I think they had, they had a letter and again, it was, they're waiting for, I think they're waiting for their funding. If you recall, nothing, nothing moves out there unless they get their funding.
Yeah, New York State hadn't made their final determination yet, is what I remember.
So that applies to both these resolutions. So let's vote on this one. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and Amanda, you did so well. Why don't we do the one for the clubhouse?
We're at CPN two zero dash zero one seven. I'll make a motion for the first ninety-day extension of Creekview Apartments at Woodland Park, final phase one, three thousand County Road ten for this clubhouse.
I'll second again.
Thank you.
Barry seconds. We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Okay, just to, that gets us down to training. There's been a lot of online training for everybody. I've, I've done a couple of the New York Planning Federation ones. I see we have a celebrity in the house, a presenter that's online with us for the twenty-first. Mr. Brayban is making a presentation. Just signed up, I signed up for that today, Lance.
Hey.
Are you going to, are you going to use our board as a good example or a bad example?
I'm going to give the examples. I don't know which one is good and which one's bad. I guess it's all up to the attorneys, right?
Well, if it's a good example and it's us, mention her name.
There you go. I will.
Okay, all right, so yeah, it's, I think Eric sent it out or it came out from the notice. And it's, it's an hour on the twenty-first from noon to one. Okay, how they're going to keep Lance under an hour?
I'm going to do a lot of hand motions.
All right. And please, if you haven't done your training yet, I know Amanda's chipping away at hers. Good for you. You learned anything, Amanda?
Oh, tons and tons. No, I have, I'm not, I shouldn't be. Yeah, the seeker one was last week. That was, that was fun. I'll be a little sarcastic about that one. That one was better.
Were you able to stay awake?
Yes, it was during the day, so it's necessary.
Yeah, you don't take seeker at night. Put you to sleep real quick. All righty. All right, so get your training done. You have to the end of the year. Veteran board members, four hours. Amanda's got her twelve, so see what you can do. There's plenty of opportunities. All right, next meeting is the twenty-seventh. Got a couple of things happening.
Couple of these are pending variances, NMS is pending variances. Actually, I guess it's only that one, isn't it? Oh, Inverness A Group for Chinaco and Sons.
Okay, and Metros, he's got everything together now to proceed. Bill.
Oh, good.
Montrose, I guess. And and I also didn't, yeah, don't we have, Greco, okay. Oh, Geneca rather. Yeah, he's, he's finally, I think we figured out what he's trying to do out there, or she's trying to do out there. So we'll move ahead with that too, and that'll be exciting. So anything else for the, go to the group?
I would just say I sent out the comprehensive plan to everybody or the draft of it. So take a look and give me comments back.
Well done, well done. As I said, Eric, I liked it because I had a lot of pictures. A lot of good pictures. And strategically located where you were just starting to, you know, it's getting to kind of wordy and then along came a good picture. It was great.
Got to break it up. Try to get comments back to me if you can by the end of this month, maybe a week before.
Okay, if nothing else to talk about, Ryan?
Motion to adjourn at ten after seven.
Wow.
Says seven eleven over here.
Yeah, I'll gladly second that.
The good guys are down zero to seven now. Yeah, I like this. This was, this moved us along quickly tonight.
Okay, well, I'm glad we were able, and thanks for your help. And John, thanks for your keeping track of the group. And Lance, thanks for your help. And Eric, thanks for, you think things will be back online at the town hall tomorrow? Probably not. You got, you got a, you got to pay your, your internet bill every once in a while, you know?
Yeah, you guys are working on it.
My lighting bill. I don't know who's going on my camera. I can't figure that out.
With COVID, you're supposed to get forbearance on not paying your bills, so. All right, I think we took a vote on closing the. All right, I think we took a vote on closing the meeting. So with that, I'll say goodbye. Thanks, folks.
Yeah.